Hi, I'm Lori Anthony from ABC 7 News. Welcome to a forum of candidates running for three seats on the Pittsburgh City Council. Today's forum is sponsored by the Contra Costa Elections Division, Contra Costa Television, the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, and the League of Women Voters of West Contra Costa County. We're recording these roundtables here in the studio of Contra Costa Television. The candidates are Chanelles Scales-Preston, Duri Foster Jr., Holland Barrett-White, Wolf Kroski, Merle Craft, and Mark Gargalakis. We drew lots before the show to determine the speaking order, so we will begin with Chanelles Scales-Preston. Thank you all for being with us. My first question, if you're elected, what would be your top priority?
Yes, thanks Lori. So my top priority would be Highway 4 traffic. You know, with the traffic now, we are not getting our fair funding when it comes to, when it comes to with regards to how the funding is divvied out. So for example, we just passed Regional Measure 3. However, our people or constituents in East County live and work in San Francisco and Silicon Valley, but we're the ones that are paying more at the tolls. It's unfair for our working families to pay that money at the tolls, and it's not a right balance for us. So that would be one of my first priorities. Second, we'll be looking at the downtown area. We have a beautiful downtown, but we do have a lot of empty buildings. So looking at different models to see how we can bring small business to our downtown area. And my third would be a better balance of jobs for East County. It would be nice to have more jobs in the area so that families can come home and work closer to home. It's not taking them two hours to get home to their children.
All right, thank you. Duri, same question. What would be your top priority?
Well, I think, first of all, thanks for having me here today. My top priority would certainly be, in conjunction with Chanelles stated, is traffic is a major concern in Pittsburgh. And so we really have to come up with better alternatives of how we deal with traffic and through the city of Pittsburgh. But I think one of the significant issues that we have is our downtown and getting that particular area revitalized. Right now, we've spent a lot of money in our downtown area, and I don't believe we've seen the fruit of that as of yet. And so that needs to be a significant focus as we move forward, and that's something that I will make as a priority if I'm elected to the City Council.
All right, Duri, thank you very much. Holland, same question. What's your top priority?
Thank you. So I'd say my top priority is to continue partnering with our schools to ensure that they're safe and that they're always an open learning environment for our kids and our youth to continue to attend school and have a safe environment to learn. And my second priority would be transportation. Autonomous vehicles are right around the corner, and as a city, we need to really come together and understand how we're going to plan for smart growth. And then also economic development, not only in the downtown area, but all around the city. We have to ensure that we're revitalizing our retail centers and ensure that we're attracting new businesses to promote job growth.
All right, Holland, thank you very much. Wolf, same question. Top priority?
So Lori, as a lifelong resident in the city of Pittsburgh, you've seen things change for the better, for the worse. Downtown has definitely been a center of attention for the city, but we have to look at the four corners of the city and bringing jobs and commercial development to those corners so that people don't have to all funnel into one area for shopping. For example, we really don't have the commercial stores and services that our residents are demanding. And so they are having to leave our community, which means their tax dollars are leaving. That's revenue that the city can't use to then fund other programs. So increasing the cash flow at the city level and bringing in services that do that. And as a business owner and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I feel that I have the ability to help bring businesses to the city of Pittsburgh.
All right, thank you very much. Wolf, Merle, same question. What would be your top priority?
Thank you, Lori. Economic development, and not just for Pittsburgh, but as a regional, so the far east county. We have access by land, by water, by air, and we need to have those jobs within our reach. And so this would address some of the issue about Highway 4, because we wouldn't be commuting out to jobs. We would have those jobs within our community. But it also stimulates the economies in our surrounding neighborhoods as well. And so for me, the economic development piece, we also have to have the training program, because you have to have a trained workforce. If you're going to bring in new development, you're going to bring in manufacturing or business, you have to have a workforce that's ready for that as well. That is my top priority. Thank you.
All right, Mark, same question. Top priority?
My top priority would be safety. If we work together and become a very safe city, meaning one of the safest cities in the county, that will help other businesses bring their jobs there. What we need is a safe city. We need jobs, sustainable jobs, not beginner jobs. We need jobs that people could have a career. And those are all areas that we're lacking tremendously in Pittsburgh. And that's why if we have a safe city, then outside companies will want to come in and run their businesses through our town.
All right, Mark, thanks very much. New question, and we'll start this time with Duri. Kind of goes to what a lot of you have talked about, which is the downtown area. What do you see as more important for the city right now? Building new homes and commercial spaces, or rehabbing, expanding, better utilizing the existing homes and storefronts in your town?
Well, I think it's actually a combination of both. I think we, in order for us to really have a city that's able to sustain itself, we certainly need to have the commercial spaces. We need to have new homes, not simply low-income homes, but we need to have market-rate homes, because those are the individuals that are going to really help us with our revenue shortage. So we really need to have a mixture of both commercial, we need to, the buildings that we have in our downtown, we need to get those buildings filled. And I think really the central point there is we need a anchor downtown, someone, some type of business that will attract other businesses to come to our downtown area, which is great, but it lacks that. So we need the foot traffic, so we need an anchor in our downtown area. So I think those are the things that are important, and it will help bring businesses in. But again, both of those things are very important.
All right, Duri, thank you. Chanelles, same question. What do you see as the priority? Bringing in the new or utilizing that which is existing?
I think a little bit of both. You want to bring in a little new, but we don't want so much growth that it changes our small-town charm. I mean, that's what we love about downtown Pittsburgh. And so the businesses that are down there, or the open space that's down there, I think we can figure out how to look at other models, other cities, and what they have done, and to bring business down there to help fill up those spaces.
All right, thanks. Holland, same thing?
Thank you. I believe also that it's a combination of both. In the downtown area, there's been so much emphasis put on finding an anchor, but I really believe that it's about encouraging our entrepreneurs and our small businesses to locate downtown and to make that a thriving area for shopping and commerce. I also believe that our waterfront around our industrial areas could be better utilized. There's a lot of empty space, there are a lot of old buildings, dilapidated buildings. How do we partner with our industry partners to encourage growth so that we are attracting newer jobs and first-time employment opportunities?
All right, we'll skip over here to Mark. Thoughts on new versus old in your city?
Growth is always frowned upon, but growth is what America's about. If we don't grow, if you don't grow and you don't go forward, you're going to get left behind. We do love the hills around Pittsburgh. We do love open space, but in order to run a city, you need tax dollars. Tax dollars means you need people in the city that are willing to come and spend extra money. So in order to do that, we need growth. That's what sustains, that's the budget, that's the biggest part of the budget, is tax. So in order, I would love to say I don't want growth, but I do want growth. It is the way to, for a city to thrive and to go forward.
All right, thanks, Mark. Merle?
I agree with everyone, it's both, in that we have to do smart planning, and when we do that, our developments have to include commercial, it has to include retail. But going to Holland's point about the waterfront, we have an opportunity, because it is cheaper to operate in East Contra Costa County. Again, I go back to the regional economic development, and we can bring in manufacturing and businesses there, because think about what the cost would be in Oakland or San Jose for land where we have it here. And again, we are accessible by so many different means, and revenues are definitely needed. And we have to start thinking smarter, and we have to start seeing, when we're bringing in development, we have to look at the revenues and what people will attract as well, because then you get your mix of income coming in as well. Thank you.
Wolf, same question. Old versus new?
It's a tough question. As a real estate broker, I deal with development quite a bit and dealing with, you know, people wanting to build, wanting to remodel properties, wanting to bring in their businesses. And the issue is not necessarily looking at old versus new, but it's looking at this paradigm shift of how are we using spaces, and that the workspace is changed. You no longer have what's called Class A office buildings, where it's just these huge centers where people are going. You have liquid space. You have, like, we work in different places where they take a underutilized property and make it into workspace so that people can stay in their area and they can work. So that's how you reduce traffic. We also have to look at not just the old town. If I was a resident of the San Marco or the Oak Hills neighborhood, and I would be severely frustrated that we're not getting the development on that side of town for services, I shouldn't have to drive 20 minutes to find the services I need. So we have to look at not just what we're building, but where we're building it, and getting people what they need, because if tax dollars are not being spent in Pittsburgh, it's a total loss regardless if it's new or old.
All right, thank you all for your answers to that question. We'll go to a new one, a little bit different. Holland, why don't we start with you? Where are your favorite places to go in Pittsburgh?
So my favorite places to go have to be the Pittsburgh Marina. Being from Atlanta, Georgia, we didn't have any access to water. So being in Pittsburgh, it really allows me to really have a deep understanding and love for the, like Chanelles said, the small-town charm of Pittsburgh, but also the value and the diversity that exists with the water and the rolling hills. So for me, it's not only that environmental piece of the green hills, but it also is that access to the water and the possibilities of recreation.
And you feel like there needs to be more?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Duri, same question. I mean, where do you love to go in Pittsburgh?
Well, I think the city, I grew up in Oakland, so Oakland has a lot of diversity of different things you can do. But I enjoy the fact that I love to eat, so there's a lot of great places to eat in Pittsburgh, not just in the downtown area. But I'm also an outdoors person, so I like to go fishing, and I can get in my truck and drive a mile down to the marina and get on a boat and go out in the delta and catch fish. So I think that's one of the beautiful things about our small town, is that you can go hiking, you can go fishing, you can go eat wherever you want to go, and there's a lot of other activities that you can do within the city of Pittsburgh. So I enjoy that. So that's what I like to do, is eat.
And do you feel like it's a little bit of a well-kept, too-well-kept secret, what Pittsburgh has to offer?
I do, I really do. I think if we would, if we spent some time on beautifying the downtown and highlighting some of the other areas of our city, as Wolf said, you know, the San Marcos area, and getting the necessary development in terms of grocery stores and things in that area, I think it would be a far more attractive place. And people that are now commuting to Antioch and Brentwood, they would say, hey, why do that? I can just live in Pittsburgh, because they got everything I need, and I'm going to shave 45 minutes off of my commute.
All right, Duri, thank you. Chanelles, same question. Where do you like to go? What do you like to do?
Yeah, now that I have two young boys, I mean, one of my favorite spots is Small World Park. It's like a hidden jewel in the city of Pittsburgh. Also, we, you know, we do a lot of bike riding along the trails in Pittsburgh. So we spend a lot of time, either we're walking the trails or riding our bikes. And, you know, I think our parks are just beautiful. We don't have a lot of parks, like, you know, Wolf Gaines talking about, in the San Marco area, they just build a park. So we do need to invest a little bit more in that part of town.
All right, Chanelles, thank you very much. Merle, why don't we ask you the same question? What do you like to do? Where do you like to go?
90% of my leisure time is spent in the parks or the downtown area, because coming from a recreation background with the city 35 years, and so that was what I did, was special events and sports and that sort of thing. And so for me, it's just being in Pittsburgh. It is all the different areas, because I have a history with all the different areas. I can connect something with those areas. But it's the fact that you can walk through Pittsburgh, and you are always going to run into someone that you know. And I love our car shows, because it brings everybody, it's like a reunion. Everybody comes back for the Thursday nights for the car shows. When we have our events at the waterfront, it's just a totally relaxing experience, and it's all ages. They have kids' games out, the kids are throwing balls and that sort of thing. You've got music, and people are just sitting, and everyone comes to just have a great time. And so for me, I would say Pittsburgh.
All right, thank you. Wolf, same question. What do you like to hang out?
Let's see, you got Lumpy's Diner, they have a good breakfast. You got Los Chitas, it's got good California burritos. With five kids, my wife and I love, you know, going to the parks, letting the kids run around, going to the California Theater. I'm the season ticket holder to the Pittsburgh Community Theater. They got Spam a lot coming, I've been looking forward to watching that. But it's, there's so much that our city has, sometimes it's hard to figure out what you want to do. But the most important piece that I do is Pittsburgh is family-friendly, and that's why I am raising my kids. My wife and I are raising our kids here, and anywhere we go, our five kids can come with us. And that's really what's important, whether it's seafood festival, car show, going out to eat, anything, it's family-friendly. And for me, protecting that and promoting that and boosting that family-friendliness is really important.
Okay, Mark, you've heard everybody else.
The one thing that they all didn't say, and it's un-American to not say the Mecca. Okay? If you're from Pittsburgh, if you're from Pittsburgh, the first place you should go is the Mecca. I hate to tell you guys, I'm a little bit older, and that's the number-one place in the city. Everybody knows this. As far as there's La Veranda, there's a lot of great restaurants that I frequently dine at. Small World Park, my grandson loves it. He doesn't catch the crawdads like we used to back in the day, but it is a hidden jewel. I love, actually, I do it a lot, is just driving around through park to park to see how many people are in. I live up by Buchanan Park, and that park on weekends is packed. And I love seeing people out doing stuff. And I pretty much circle the city, see where people are, what they're doing.
All right, Mark, thank you. We're going to change gears a little bit. Why don't we start with Merle? If you could change one thing in Pittsburgh's zoning code, what would it be?
That is a tough one. I think if I could change one thing, it would, and I'm not sure if it's so much the zoning, but we have a lot of areas that are underdeveloped, and they're underdeveloped because we have restrictions as to what could be there. And so sometimes it's more working with our Planning Commission, Council, working together to make these different things happen. We just had one where we were trying to change the zoning and got a lot of feedback because of that, and this had to do with a commercial piece on California Avenue, and it's a small operation. But it's, we have to sometimes think about what's the greater good. And so I don't want to say one zoning change. I think we need to be flexible enough that when opportunities come that benefit the city, that we can make those changes, we can be adaptable.
All right. Holland, zoning, what would you change?
Like stated earlier, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to take a second look at our industrial areas. I think right now, what you're seeing is a trend all across the country, is how do you build communities that coexist with industry, not industry and community? So I think that there's a lot of vacant land, and some of that is privately held for industry expansion. But if the plans aren't to expand that particular area, then how do we, as a city, come together and figure out how to put maybe a commercial hub down there, maybe more residential, remediate some of that area to make that available public space so that we can continue to enjoy our waterfront, not just by the marina, but to explore other opportunities to access our waterfront.
All right, Chanelles, what do you think?
Yes, so I would have to say the same thing. We have the, you know, Pittsburgh is an industrial area, and so I would say, some of those areas in the downtown area, if we were, if it was possible to change that zoning to, you know, create something different, so it doesn't look like it's just all this empty space or these empty companies that used to be there is no longer there, that would be the part that I would change in downtown.
Okay, Wolf, you're the real estate guy.
So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the old town, the downtown. My office is on railroad, it's a beautiful place, I love it, but it's less than, I don't know, 30 acres. It's a small representation of our whole city, and the commerce, I wouldn't necessarily change the zoning, I would change how we communicate and educate the public about zoning, because when there's, as Merle was talking about, potential project and changing zoning, a lot of the questions and frustrations come from a lack of education on the resident, and not necessarily understanding the process and understanding the whys. And so one thing that I would like to bring in discussion to zoning is educating the public and helping them understand why we're doing, and explaining the why. When people understand the why, the what is not that big a deal. And we have to look at areas outside of downtown, because it's a small area, it cannot handle all the economic needs that our city has. And we need to look at other areas and how we can get creative with the zoning, educating the public, and making good things happen.
All right, thanks very much. Duri, same question. If you could change one thing in the zoning code, what would it be?
Well, I have the pleasure of serving on the Planning Commission since 2017, and so we do get an opportunity to see things that come before us, that people want zoning changes, what have you. And one of the things that struck me is, I think that we've had the railroad-specific plan for some time now, but I think it's been rather ineffective. So I would really look at modifying the railroad-specific plan and actually even expanding it to include other areas, because I think when we, when we limit the focus to that level of development, I think we limit ourselves as a city. So I think I would really like to take further look at that and modifying that in a manner that it would be more conducive for businesses coming and doing business in Pittsburgh.
Okay, Mark, zoning, how would you change it?
Zoning, I've been on the Planning Commission for eight years, so zoning, and this has been something that I've dealt with a lot with the city. I believe that the railroad-specific plan, the general plan, are all documents that were made, I don't know, produced, I don't know what word it would be, quite a few years ago. They do need to be updated, and I believe starting next year, they are going over, I think it's the general plan is going to be redone. And by doing that, we need to move forward. And the problem is, when they did these documents, you, at the time, a lot of the Amazons and all these companies weren't around. So now we have to move with times and move up into the 21st century or later, because everything now is technology, and we have to try to get in tune with that.
All right, thanks, Mark. We'll go on to a new question here. We'll start with Wolf. Most leaders have a group of close associates or advisors that they turn to for advice and support. Who makes up your group of your, quote, "kitchen cabinet" that you might turn to for help?
Wow. So first and foremost, my wife and my family. I don't want to discredit the support that they provide and the advice that they give me. They are residents of Pittsburgh. So my family is definitely huge support for me. Fellow business associates that own businesses in the city of Pittsburgh that I have a good working relationship with, and we can bounce ideas off as far as economic development, as far as bringing businesses. What is your business struggling with? And actually, you know, business owner to business owner, having those conversations about what does it take to improve business? And then lastly, friends that I've made growing up through high school and that I'm still connected with. I really value relationships, and long-term relationships bring great results. I don't have a professional campaign manager or anything like that. I kind of, I'm grassroots, bootstrapping this, and I feel that that authenticity and having that family part of it really provides strength.
Okay, thank you. Merle, who's in your kitchen cabinet?
My family, first and foremost. My husband, he is a great businessman, and so being able to turn to him to get questions, and sometimes he's the one that drives me the craziest, because he says no first. But then I also have some wonderful mentors in the community, Nancy Parent and Mary Urbiz. I started working with the city when I was 16 and a half years old, and under the leadership of Mary Urbiz. And Mary was one who came through the secretarial pool and then went on to become the city clerk, and then she became assistant city manager, and then she was the mayor. And so basically, I am trying to follow in her footsteps. And so she was the first person that I went to when I wanted to run for council in the last time, and her and Nancy have always been there for me. And again, my family and friends.
All right, thank you very much. Mark, kitchen cabinet?
Like everybody else, my family first, would be my wife, my three kids, grandkids. They don't really care about this kind of stuff, but they're in my corner no matter what. As far as people in the community, born and raised in Pittsburgh, so I do have deep roots with Orange and Black, Pittsburgh High School. I do have deep roots with a lot of former mayors, former councilmen's that I basically lean on to this day. One of our former mayors and police chief, Will Casey, just passed a couple nights ago, and presently, I'm redoing his house for him, and he passed. So there's a lot of people in Pittsburgh that have been around for a long time that I really, when I, when I need to, Mary Urbiz is another strong, I go to her for just about anything. One of the nicest, truthfullest ladies in the city.
All right, Mark, thanks very much. Holland, do you have a kitchen cabinet?
Yes. So I wasn't born in Pittsburgh, but I'm certainly anchored in Pittsburgh. I have a deep family roots also. And you know, just my mom. My mom moved to the city of Pittsburgh after she learned about how much I loved the city. She is my base, and also my father, they both inspire me to continue to not only push the limits on my own understanding, but just understanding how I can be of service to others. And also, I've had a great opportunity to work for the county for five years. So Supervisor Federal Glover has been an instrumental part, not only just helping me to understand how policy works and how to push the limits on what's possible, but also continuing to push me to embrace the change that I want to see, you know? There's so many people in the political atmosphere that want you to go a certain way, or they push you towards their way of thinking, but I've been very blessed to be around a base that encourages me to listen to the people and to do what's right.
All right, Holland, thanks. Chanelles, who's in your cabinet?
Yes, so first and foremost, I would have to say my husband. He is really a great push for me, and he allows me to be the woman that I am today. The next would probably be the people in our community. I would say our faith community, like Pastor Perkins, Willie Mims, Greg Assorio, Tim Manley, they all have been great supporters, and I grew up around them as well, and they have, you know, guided me along the way as well. Nancy Parent has been a great mentor as well, Yvonne Bills, even our own Merle Craft. I used to be part of her recreation program when she was part of City of Pittsburgh, and I used to go to the city gym. So my, also my other base, which is a little wider, I would say my own work family, they have been great mentors to me as well, and that's George Miller and Mark DeSonia. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Duri, who's in the cabinet?
Well, I have the privilege of having a very rewarding career in corporate America, and, you know, my wife has been my steadfast supporter, and so I certainly lean on her for advice and counsel. But I also lean on my pastor, who gives me sound advice and keeps me grounded, and other professionals in the business realm. A lot of executives that I know, I can run things by them, people that I know in other cities that are involved in government, I have access to them, and I certainly will reach out to them for counsel, because I think it's important to have more than just your own counsel.
All right, thank you very much. New question, we'll start with Mark. All council members are expected to participate in a variety of regional boards, agencies, and activities. Are you able to commit the time and energy to those tasks, and what specific areas are you most interested in?
Yes, is the answer to the question. Being on the Planning Commission, we were, there's transplan, there was, what was the other one? Land use? Yeah, let's see, I forget some of this stuff. But land use was a committee that I was on. But land use was a committee that I was on as the chair of the commission. And it was a very fascinating committee. I really, really enjoyed it. And there's more. I know council has quite a few more. I've never had a problem with attendance. So, yeah, getting there is not really a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much. Holland, same question. Boards, agencies, what are you interested in?
So, a lot of those boards and agencies I currently frequent because of my current job. So, being able to build and foster relationships with MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, also CCTA, Contra Costa Transportation Authority, you have LAFCO. And our ability to continue to develop those relationships on a regional level so that we can lobby to have more resources invested into our city is the greatest opportunity.
Well, so much, so many of those boards and agencies affect what goes on in Pittsburgh, right? If you don't all work together?
Exactly.
The region has common interests, right? Chanel, same question. What are you interested in? Which boards, et cetera? And do you have the time and the energy to commit to it?
Definitely. I do have the time and the energy. So, you know, the boards you just mentioned, Holland, so I'm really, like I said, I'm really interested in transportation. And I believe, you know, just being on MTC or being on CCTA, you know, just being part of that forward-thinking of what transportation is going to look like for our city and just making sure that we're not being left out in the process when it comes to East County just regionally.
Okay. Merle, same thing?
Right now, I serve on Tri-Delta Transit. And I love that experience because it's, we're learning connectivity in East County. And it's amazing, some of the different things that they're trying out now by bringing in Lyft and Uber and vans and ride share and that sort of thing. So, it's not just about the bus anymore. And then, it's how do we make this go from here to here? Because you have paratransit and all these things. And so, these timing and these schedules that they're putting together is amazing to make it all work, to connect to BART, to connect to the other agencies. So, I really enjoy that. One of my favorite ones is the Pittsburgh Recognition Committee. And that's where people bring thoughts and ideals as to people who have done a lot in our community and how do we take and recognize them? How do we do parks or plaques or different things like that? What is the criteria? What do we do? And land use subcommittee, because I'm always interested in development.
Okay. Wolf, you got the time and the energy for all this?
I've actually been asked this question a lot because people know that I, you know, I have five kids, I'm in Rotary, I'm co-owner of the Pittsburgh Diamonds and all these things. And their concern is, how can you possibly serve us well if you're already doing these other things? And this is a valid question. Luckily, my wife is a rock star and allows me to have the opportunity to serve in these things. And for me, the boards that I'd like to serve on don't exist yet because transportation is really a symptom. It's not a problem. The problem is that people have to leave our area to get stuff done. We need to look at, how do we get businesses here in not just Pittsburgh, but kind of what Merle was saying in the region? Because regionally, we're only about 300,000 people. So, we need to look at, how do we connect the chambers of commerce together? How are we getting businesses here? So, there are some boards that already cover some of those items, but there are boards that have not been formed yet that I would like to help form so that we can get serious about keeping businesses, people, and dollars in Pittsburgh so that we can have the nice things that we want as a city.
All right. Duri, same question.
Well, very good question. And I have the pleasure, as I said before, of serving on the Planning Commission. So, I'm doing that. I attend 95% of the city council meetings. I serve on land use committee right now. So, I'm already very active and it's really not going to be a difficulty or challenge for me to continue to do that.
Okay. We're going to go to a new question. And Chanel, I think it's your turn to start us off. And this is a little more, I guess, about the politics of Pittsburgh. There's been criticism that the city manager holds too much power over the council. Do you believe that to be the case? And if so, what would you do to change that? Or do you even believe it needs to change?
Well, I know the city manager very well. And, you know, I, in terms of the politics of it, I'm not quite sure of, I guess, what, you know, I haven't really heard anything, to my knowledge, of what's going on in terms of the politics of that. So, I don't want to speak too much on that. But as from what I've seen, he's doing, you know, a great job. And our council members have been doing a wonderful job as well. And if there was something to my knowledge, if I was on the board, then that would be something that I would like to discuss with the city manager and my fellow board members.
Well, I guess it's about, is it, you know, in my business, we talk about, is it a reporter-driven shop or is it a producer-driven shop? And, you know, I guess the question is maybe, Duri, is it structural? I mean, do you see that a city manager should have a lot of influence over the city council? Do you feel that's the case in Pittsburgh? And if it needs to change, how would you change it?
Well, I think the important thing is the city council is the entity that runs the city. And if we're communicating any other message other than that, I think that is somewhat problematic. Yes, the city manager runs the day-to-day operation. But I think it's important that the citizen know that when there's an issue that comes up, that the city council is actively involved. One of my concerns that I see, as I said, I'm pretty actively involved in the community, is I often hear people say, well, the city council doesn't, no one on the city staff reports to the city council. Well, everybody reports to the city council, really. And I think there needs to be open transparency within the city. I know that one of the current standards I have is that the, many times, if you want to meet with a department head, if you're on the council, is what I've heard, you have to have the city manager there. And I don't think that's the kind of thing we need to have. And that's something that I would work to change.
All right, Duri, thank you. Mark, same question. Does and should the city manager have as much influence or a lot of influence over the council?
The city council only has two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. Those are the only two employees that the city council can fire. The city manager's job is to run the day-to-day on direction of the city manager, on direction of the council. So, if the council doesn't like the direction that the city manager is running, they need to step up and tell them, okay, this, we need to change. This is the avenue we want to do. Because there directly, that's his boss. The city, the council is elected by our boss, is all the people living in the city. So, the chain of command is the people in the city, elect us, we elect or appoint city manager and city attorney. Because those are really the only two employees that the city council has control of.
All right. Thanks. Holland, do you think it works the way it should? Do you think the city manager has the right balance with the council in terms of the influence?
Well, I think that, I think that ultimately, it's the city council's role and responsibility to continue to be a strong council. Like Mark said, the city manager reports to that council. And I think the city manager ultimately runs the operations of the city. So, if the city council is not happy with the city manager's performance, then the city council has to work as a collective to figure out what that resolve is. I think in government, especially with the structure of the city of Pittsburgh, it's important to build synergy. In the spirit of Team Pittsburgh, how do you develop and continue to develop lines of communication so you're an effective government and you're working for the people?
All right. Holland, thank you. Merle, same question. There's been criticism that the city manager holds too much power over the council. What do you think?
As a current council member, I disagree. So, there's five personalities on that council. And we each come with strong opinions as to what should happen. And we're not afraid to say collectively what should happen. But one of the misconceptions is, is that the city manager tells us what to do. That is not how it happens. He presents to us things that come up. He presents to us suggestions or whatever. It is up to the council, and that's what we do. And we determine based on input from our constituents as to what should happen. I also want to say that one of the things about our city manager is he's the go-to person in Contra Costa County of city managers. He's the one that they look to because City of Pittsburgh has set the lead in a higher bar, an example, than most cities. And so, he is the go-to person. And that's any city you could call and ask that question. Thank you.
All right. Wolf?
So, first, want to make sure that the audience knows that my comments are geared towards the title and not the person, you know? Because every person has their foibles. I have my own foible. So, just looking at the structure that with the city manager running the day-to-day operations, if things are not going the way a council would like based off of input from their constituents, that's the council's responsibility to direct their employee. That's the same way I do with my employees. I believe this question may have been asked because people want us to get us to say, should the city manager have to live in Pittsburgh or things like that? And that's just, you know, that's an answer that you don't want to give because now you're pigeonholed into one thing and you have unintended consequences. So, whoever came up with that question will not give you the satisfaction of that. But I think structurally, the city manager only has as much power as the council gives him. So, really, the question should be asked, council, how would you like to use the city manager as one of your employees?
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go on to a new question. This one arguably is a tad loaded as well. Given that, and we'll start with Duri. Given that many of the actions taken by the current council are being done either through consent or with very little public discussion, what specific actions would you take to ensure that council decisions are made openly and transparently?
Wow, that's a very good question because I hear that often about things that are done. And whether people realize it or not, some people hear talk about what's going on and they may not have any direct knowledge of it. I think all of the council's business, with the exception of those things that are sensitive, should be done in open session. I think there's very few things that they should be doing in private because I think the public has a right to know what its city council is doing. So, I think that there is rightfully so, some criticism of things that are done in private. But I think it takes the citizens to say, hey, we want to be involved in that whole process. And that's one of the reasons I'm running because I want the citizens to be actively involved in the process and give them really a voice.
Okay. Thank you. Merle, you're on the council. I mean, is that a valid criticism? Is that something that you think is happening?
There are some things that could be done differently. However, we do have to keep in mind that we're governed by the Brown Act. And there's things that you cannot discuss. You can't openly have a discussion about a development agreement before you have anything, before you go to that person. You also can't divulge certain information. So, there's things that are governed by the Brown Act that we have to. And again, reeducating our community that there are laws that we have to abide by. And that's, they believe that everything that we do should be discussed in open forum. You can't conduct business that way by conducting it in open forum because first of all, there would be five of us. That's in violation of the Brown Act. And so, but could we do things a little bit differently? Of course, there's always room for improvement. And there may be some things that are, 15 seconds. There may be some things that we could, which are not subject to the Brown Act, that maybe, and again, you always have the opportunity to pull something off the consent calendar. Any constituent has that opportunity. And once that's pulled, then you have the open discussion.
All right. Thank you. Chanel, you have thoughts on that?
Yeah. I believe transparency is really important. So, we want to be as open as possible. And I do understand those things that we cannot be open about. But we do want to make sure the community knows and reaching out to them in other ways. If that's like, we're doing a council meeting via, you know, live or we can do it, you know, Facebook where people can watch the council meeting as well. Trying to figure out other methods that the community can connect with those city council meetings, I think would be helpful as well.
All right. Mark?
I agree with everybody. It's a fine line on which you could talk about and which you can't talk about. Development agreements, what Merle was talking about, are very sensitive on many issues that are legal. And you can't say everything, but you do need to have as much transparency as possible. Where the gray area is, where the line is. Do we need to go farther in transparency? Yes, we do. We do. But with, and then going back on Joe Sabrani, city attorney, they're the ones that direct you on where, what should be in closed session and what should not be. And so, it's a very, very fine line there.
All right. Holland, same question.
Much like what Wolf suggested about creating boards and commissions that don't currently exist, let's think outside of the box. Let's create educational campaigns for our community so that they have an opportunity to learn at their pace what's happening in our government. I, like most people, use YouTube as a great opportunity to learn as much as I can. But the one thing I can't learn is what happened in the city council meeting on YouTube. So, can we build how-to videos? Can we build one-pagers? How do we partner with the district to understand how to get our message to as many families as we can as possible in a way that enriches our communities, educates our communities, and inspires our community?
All right. Wolf, I think you're the last one on this question.
Yeah. So, my whole campaign has been around the hashtag "different." And it's not necessarily that things are being done incorrectly, but they need to be done different. When the Brown Act was written, social and media were not paired together. And those times have changed. And we need to look at, so really, what are the policies and the rules that we're governed by? And how can we adapt them to the 22nd century? Social media is here today. I was part of a gathering this morning at Pittsburgh High School where by using social media, we're able to gather a lot of parents together instantly. Social media is here. There's no reason why a city manager cannot give a weekly update, a 30-second video on Facebook to communicate that. So, it's easy to use the word transparency because it sounds cool. But we need to get serious about communicating in different avenues to our constituents and using current technologies to convey that message. You look at other cities, when there's a planning development or a public hearing on an item, they post a huge four-by-eight sign saying, hey, there's a project proposed on this piece of land. So, when you're driving by, you see it. Here, we use eight-and-a-half sheet by 11 paper and people, oh, I had no idea. They should do research on their own, but we have to do things different.
All right. I think we have about four minutes left. I have one more question I'm going to ask all of you. I think we need to keep it to maybe 30 or 40 seconds for the answer. Holland, we'll start with you. How can you contribute to a successful council meeting and to what the council's going to try to accomplish?
Well, I think as someone who's grown up in both the analog and digital world, I'm constantly always thinking about different ways on how to get to the next step. And I think that partnering with our communities, listening to our communities, and developing smart policy for our communities to lead us into the future is our greatest opportunity. And I really, really want to work towards continuing the work that I've done at the county and bring some of that innovation to the city.
All right. Duri, same question. How do you personally contribute to a successful council meeting?
Well, I've got more than 25 years of experience in senior management, executive roles. And I believe that experience will be vital to helping the council make the very important decisions that we will face over the next five years, next 10 years. Because there are many things that are going to be heading our way and we really need a steady hand at the helm. And so, I believe that's how I can positively affect the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay. Merle? Merle, same question. How do you contribute to a successful council meeting?
By being the go-to councilwoman. So, there's a lot of things that go on in our community during the day. And so, you have council members that have jobs because this is not a full-time job. And people forget that. So, there needs to be someone who's available to go and do different things. And a lot of the times, I am that person because of my work schedule and I work in town. But also, you also, we hear a lot about technology. We hear a lot about the youth and everything else. But we also have to preserve our history, who we were. Okay? We're building from that basis and we have to stand with that as well because we can grow, we can do all these things. But if we lose a sense of who we were, we lose Pittsburgh.
All right. Thanks. Wolf, same question. Successful council meeting, how do you do it?
Well, if I've learned to manage five kids under 10, I think I can handle counseling. But I really would, for me, it's although the word on the street is that I'm not a team player, I absolutely am. And bringing the ability to be a team player because five people have to work together to make the city go. But what I bring is, going back to the word "different," is coming as a business owner from the business world, bringing that lens to the conversation, say, hey, let's look at it through this lens first before we go on to conclusion. And that lens has been missing for over 20 years from the city council. missing for over 20 years from the city council.
All right. Chanel, successful council meeting, how do you do it?
Yes. So I think with my experience of working at different levels of government, working at the county level and the federal level, I have had the opportunity to, you know, work with different agencies where we were able to bring resources to cities such as Pittsburgh. I think with my ability to do that and work with others, I would be able to, you know, be a successful council member and be a team player at the same time.
And finally, Mark, how do you, how do you make that city council meeting successful when it looks like it might go off the rails?
Well, when I was on the planning commission, I was the board, I was the chair for three years. And by being the chair, you have to learn how to run the meeting, basically. It's very important to let everybody speak, do it in a timely manner, and let everybody get their thoughts out. The mayor, it is a difficult job. Like what Merle said, there's a lot of day-to-day stuff that needs to be handled during the day. I am self-employed, so I do make my own schedule, which means I work more than everybody else. Anybody that's self-employed understands that. But to, in order to run a successful meeting is to get everybody to see a different look and come together with a good solution.
All right. Thank you all. That concludes our question and answer portion. We appreciate your answers to all of those questions. Now, each candidate will have one minute to make a closing statements, statement. We will start with Mark Gargalikas. Mark?
Yes, I am Mark Gargalikas, running for the seat of city council. I'm born and raised in the city of Pittsburgh. I've lived there my entire life. I love the city, and I want to serve the people. Thank you for having us, and thank you for this forum.
Okay, Merle, I think he left you some extra time.
So, I am Merle Craft. I'm running for reelection for the city council, and I want to continue the work that we've done over the past four years that I've been on council. Our bond rating has increased, we've got a bond rating increase 16 times, and, I'm sorry, 14 times, and of that 14, 12 of those was on my watch. I've seen this city, one of the great things about our city is watching the growth. I was here when it was, oh, Pittsburgh. And now, when you go into different communities, you hear, oh, Pittsburgh, and you hear different cities there talk about how Pittsburgh's getting things right. I want to continue the positive things that we're doing in Pittsburgh, but at the same time, we need to look and work with all of our constituents. We need to hear their voices, and we need to react to their voices. We need to build Pittsburgh in a specific way. We need to be more strategic in our planning as to how we grow out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Merle Craft. We'll go right down the line here. Wolf Kroski.
So, all through my life, you know, I was sergeant of arms at Highlands Elementary. I was in the band at Hillview. I was drum major at Pittsburgh Senior High School. People have allowed me to represent them and serve them, and I think that that pattern will still continue, because it's not about me. It's about the people of Pittsburgh. It's not about things that I have done, it's about how I can help. I'm not afraid to rattle cages, I'm not afraid to try something different, I'm not afraid to, you know, do, try something that might improve a group of people. I've learned through my years, not as many as...
Don't say it.
I wasn't going to say that.
We're both on one side.
Yeah. Basically, when it comes down to it, serving Pittsburgh and the people of Pittsburgh would be the greatest honor of my life, because I love Pittsburgh. I have an orange tie on, because those colors mean a lot to me. And it's not just the football, it's not just the band, it's that Pittsburgh is a very unique community where people love each other and work hard, and I would love to serve people like that.
All right. Thank you very much. Holland Barrett White, your turn.
Awesome. So my name is Holland, and I'm running for Pittsburgh City Council. I'm currently the youngest on the ballot. And to express my truest, deepest thoughts about why I'm running, as a millennial, I'm frightened that we're not preparing ourselves for tomorrow's problems, and we're not building in the way that we should be building in order to keep up pace with the rest of the world. And I feel as if though I shouldn't have to wait my whole life or develop a full resume of experiences to know that there is an opportunity for change, there's an opportunity to continue to do great work in our communities. I've been serving the people for five years, and I want to continue that work, and I look forward to meeting everyone and continuing to do great work. Thank you.
All right. Holland, thank you. Duri Foster Jr.
Thank you. My name's Duri Foster, and I am running for Pittsburgh City Council. I'm not running because I'm expecting to get anything other than the pleasure of helping to make Pittsburgh the best city in, in Contra Costa County. I think we have a lot of opportunity. I think if we really take time to look at what we have available, and we utilize the resources we have well, we can really take Pittsburgh to the next level. But I think you need a change on the city council to do that, so I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
All right. And finally, Chanel Scales Preston.
Hi, my name is Chanel Scales Preston. I'm running for Pittsburgh City Council. I'm running for city council because I love my community, I love Pittsburgh. I have strong roots in Pittsburgh. My father came here, and he was a construction worker. In order to get to Pittsburgh, he talks about all the time how he had to work a dollar a day picking cotton just to drive across country from Oklahoma to get here. I understand the value of hard work. I've been working since I was nine years old, working for the Post-Dispatch, delivering papers, or bussing tables at the Pancake House on Railroad Avenue. And I have worked hard, you know, once graduating from college, to work for two members of Congress and serve our community, but working with constituents, working to help save homes during the foreclosure crisis. You know, people were getting thrown out of their houses, working for veterans, IRS issues, and I look forward to helping our constituents in our community, because I know how to work with the people, and I work hard for our community.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our forum on candidates running for the Pittsburgh City Council. Once again, the candidates are Chanel Scales Preston, Duri Foster Jr., Holland Barrett White, Wolf Kroski, Merle Craft, and Mark Gargalikas. For more information on the candidates, visit the website votersedge.org. To view this broadcast online, go to www.cocovote.us. I'm Lori Anthony with ABC7 News. Thank you for watching, and don't forget to vote on November 6.